To approve or deny a site plan is a final decision unless the applicant appeals to the city council. So you'll need to contact the city clerk or community development department for details on those council hearings. Easy enough for you to say. The applicant this evening will be given 10 minutes to present their request. After presentation by staff, proponents and then opponents are allowed to speak with each speaker loud, a maximum of five minutes. The applicant then will be given five minutes for rebuttal. All comments are to be -- I'm sorry. The hearing will be closed, and after motion, the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Item listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed. I'm looking here. We have one. No, that's not. We don't have any. Will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. And we don't have any consent items at this time. The city of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages -- You have one? We'll get to it.
We'll get to it.
And encourages participation in city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-283-4209 should special accommodations be required. Assisted listening devices are available in the meetings in the council chambers. Planning and zoning commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7 for customers with that service. Broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the city of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. You need to click the watch live, which won't be here. And we really do appreciate people here. Kathy Webb-Corme, being present, do we have a motion for the minutes?
I'll move it.
Okay.
On both days.
On both days. There are two, actually. That's what I wanted to bring up. There is the last latter of February, which is February 28th, and then we also have one for March 7th. You're moving both of them, Joanna and Christine? Any discussion?
Oh, I'm staying on one of them.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Pose same sign. Jackie, are you voting? Okay. Make sure. All right. It passes by acclamation. You want to move one onto consent? Okay. Look at item number four. Item number four is a request from Katie. Oh, they want to be heard. They're people here. Okay. All right. Are you in opposition to it?
They don't support every one of the conditions that we've --
Oh, all right. All right. I see. Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and start with item number one, then. Request from Miguel Salcedo to rezone property at 1161. This is a request for reconsideration, and it has to be a motion for reconsideration before we can move forward with it. Is there a motion to reconsider item number one? Okay, we have two. All right. Item number one is a request from Miguel Salcedo to rezone property at 1161 22nd Street. The subject property is owned by MAC Investment Group, LLC. Jason, you're presenting on this one, sir.
Yes, Chair, members of the commission, Jason Van Ness and the planning staff. Let me see if I can lighten that up. See if that shows up a little better. I'll try to keep my comments brief. This item, you have received a staff presentation on this item at the previous meeting, and we are continuing to recommend the same recommendation of denial. This is the subject property, southeast of 22nd Street, in the Drake neighborhood. Response map, cards are going to be passed around. Site with a building that was originally constructed as a single family. It's lost its nonconforming status and vacant for an extended period of time. It only has rights to single-family use on the site. And then a photograph of the subject property, just as a highlight in the staff rec. We didn't support the land use plan amendment and the rezoning. It's a land use amendment and a rezoning. We felt that the lot, that the goals of the Drake neighborhood plan to do multifamily uses along the major corridors and then also kind of a broader planning perspective of you should develop multifamily on lots where you have adequate space for buffering and parking, and those things led us to recommend denial. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Mark Crotelli, attorney on behalf of MAC Investment Group. The property is a very large house, probably in excess of 5,500 square feet. Was a nine-plex when it was purchased back in approximately 2010. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date on that. At that point, the property was totally redone. It was a nice property. My property superintendent that was in charge of my management company at the time said it was the best property I had as far as its bones, its structure. Unfortunately, the property was burned, and probably 10% of the property was burned, but has been vacant since due to issues with an insurance company and things of that nature. The current nine-plex zoning, if you will, grandfather clause, if you will, again, was lost, and by default, it is now zoned as a single-family residence. We have attempted to market the property for some time as a single-family, and due to the largest of the property itself, again, I believe it's in excess of 5,500 square feet, that we have simply had no takers with a single-family residential situation, although we've had several that have come and made offers and whatever for a multifamily designation. I would agree that the former nine-plex was probably not adequate for the area. I would agree with that. We think the appropriate zoning for the area would be to reduce it from the, what was the nine-plex, but raise it from the one-plex up to a four-plex. I believe the actual application might have stated a five-plex by default, but I have in fact talked with the purchasers of the property, and they are in agreement that a four-plex would be appropriate, and we would ask that that be the application. I would simply like to state that, in all likelihood, this building will not be sold and has significant taxes and assessments owed against it in excess of probably 25,000. Simply will not be back on the public rolls as a tax profitable venture, and will probably wind up as a vacant lot at some point, if that's what the city would like to have happen. The individual that has purchased this subject to the rezoning has a history of doing quite a bit of work with the Latino community. He is here with his real estate agent who we have worked with. They do a marvelous job of serving that community, and I have no doubt that they will do a marvelous job here due to the structure and character, again, of this building. And as much as I would like to see every property in Drake neighborhood go back to single-family status, I just think the likelihood is that it's, because we have tried it, it's not going to happen. This property suffered from the largest of, it's the largest house in the neighborhood by far, and it's simply, I do not think it will be as successful as a single-family residence. As such, we would again ask that it be rezoned to a four-plex. Thank you. And I do have the purchaser and his agent here if they would like to, if anybody would like to ask them the questions about that.
Any questions? Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Carmen Hawking, and this is Mr. Salcedo. Miguel Salcedo is, him and his wife are the ones that are interested in purchasing this property. Mr. Salcedo asked me to talk for him because of language. So what he wants to tell you is his intentions about this house. When we tried to view, purchasing a duplex or something investment property, we saw in this house that it had great potential. The house is a beautiful home. We saw that the previous owner did, or the owner actually did to the house, replacing all the windows, carpets. You can see the walls, they're pretty good. Fortunately, part of the house got burned in the south, north or southeast of the house. It got burned. Now, making a purchase, it was with the condition that it will be at least four or three units. The reason is because to sell this property as a single family is too large. That's one thing. Another one, whoever buys this house, it has to have a really large family, not for a single couple with one child, because it's too big. And another one, it has to have the money to be able to afford the Mid-America bill, because just imagine, to hit this house, it's going to be tremendous bills. And another issue in this property is that the neighbors, the houses around this house, they are apartment complexes, and it has a sharing driveway. So if you buy a house to be your own home, to make it home, please, you have to have the money to be for the Mid-America. Second one, you have to share. And if you have more than two, three, four kids, when are your kids going to play? There really is not too much space for you to park your car or make it, you know, a nice backyard. So that's why, to keep the house that is so nice, probably you give the opportunity to Mr. Salcedo to remodel the house. Now, his background, Mr. Salcedo, is that he owns a company, a construction company. And he, in the past, purchased some houses. He remodeled the houses, and before he finished remodeling the houses, the houses, they were sold. Because the way that he remodeled it is not that he patched one thing and another one and put cheap carpets, no. He put top-of-the-line items. His wife is really good in decorating, so all the kitchen cabinets and everything, they were just like, you got inside of the house, you felt like a brand-new home, the new fancy houses. That's why they were sold so fast. So they never kept a house before, you know? It was just to buy them, remodel them, and resell them. Now, in this case, they want to buy the house, to keep the house, to convert it in some apartments, and give it the opportunity to some people, that can be, you know, at least two kids or two, three adults living in these apartments, remodel it, and the city can, you know, be checking everything. You know, they're really good at the city of Des Moines and keeping up with it, some buildings, apartment buildings. They can go and check what kind of work they will do it. We can put some restrictions if you want to, as long as you give them permission to convert this house in a unit apartment.
Any questions?
In order to make any kind of assessment, I'd have to see the plan for the house. How is it going to be done? Because it, I'm not so sure I have a problem with a four-plex, but it still needs to be, it needs to be looked at, because to restore a house, because it sounds like you're doing restoration rather than just putting it back together. It takes a lot of planning and work. So do you have anything like that, so that we can see what it is you're going to do?
Well, he doesn't have that right now. But the house, there are three floors, and then if you give it the opportunity at least to have a triplex, the apartment will be for each floor. There will be really large apartments, probably three bedrooms or four bedrooms, or three bedrooms and a studio, the kitchen, the living room, or a family room with everything, because it's a really, really large home. So if there were nine apartments, and pretty good-sized apartments, just imagine, to convert to nine apartments and three, there will be a lot of space in that one. So we, his plan, it will be to make an apartment per floor. So on the first floor, it will be one, and the second floor, a second one, and the third floor, another one. That's what he would like to do. If you give him a chance at least to make it a three apartments. If you decide not to do it, he wouldn't be interested to buy it. So like Mr. Crotelli says, the house is going to sit down there. I'm a Realtor, and especially I'm with the Spanish speaker community, and I can tell you, all these people that, you know, they are working in the construction, and that's why they want to do it right now. If you see the average of houses, that for 5,000 to 20,000 to 30,000, 40,000, so who's buying them? Let me tell you, they are the Spanish speakers that they work in construction, try to build the houses or buy cheaper houses to live in there. So this people knows what they're doing. He has a lot of experience in this. He owns the company. It's not just that he works for a construction company. He owns the company. So he has the people to work for him and remodel this place. It will be a pride of the neighborhood if you give him the chance to this man to do that, really. And because these houses, they are beautiful. I used to live in a house that was built in 1906. It was almost 4,000 square feet. I know, I know how they are, but I know that people destroy them sometimes. Or like this building and everything, they make mess of them. So this guy is willing to really do a good job, and keep that property for investment for his kids' school and all that. They will keep the house as long as they can. They're not going to resell the house. It will be an investment for them. They will manage the property, and they will fix the house.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Charlie?
Is he planning to live, his family, are they planning to live, reside in that home?
No, they own a house.
Oh, okay.
They have a house in West Des Moines. They have a home.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's to, just to fix it and rent it. It's an investment property for them.
Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. In favor of the application? Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Just give us your name and address.
Derek Gord, 2422 Drake Park, president, Drake Neighborhood Association. I think we talked about this a little bit last month, and after that, we had our Neighborhood Association meeting where we talked about this, and we talked about specifically this issue with large houses, and specifically how we want to manage density in the neighborhood. And the question that we presented to the board is, well, what about, you know, a triplex, or what about a duplex, or what about something? And the response that we got was, you know, we discussed these in the plan, and in the neighborhood plan, we said that we want to convert to a single-family in any case where we can, and that is how we're leaving it. We're not wanting to reduce down to a four-plex, to eventually reduce down to a duplex, to eventually reduce down to a single-family, that when they lose the conforming status, we would prefer to go to a single-family or nothing at all. We have had some of these properties that couldn't be salvaged as single-families and were torn down, and then another single-family built. I'm specifically thinking of a property 14, 15, 14, 23rd Street. I might not have that address exact. And that was exactly what was done, because the property was too large, too broken up in such a way that it couldn't be converted to a single-family. So with help from the city, it was torn down and a single-family built. Unfortunately, the developer is the exact kind of developer that we'd like to have in our neighborhood. Unfortunately, I would like to point out the size. This is a 50-foot-wide lot for a very large house, built in a time when we didn't have cars, and now we do. And we're talking about putting a triplex in a lot with multifamily, with each of them, you heard her, each unit having three bedrooms, which means we're talking still a lot of people in a 50-foot-wide lot. It wasn't designed for that, and that's not the kind of density that we feel is smart density for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Excuse me. Frank Affenato, 1128 22nd Street. Please bear with me, I'm having troubles talking. I was here last month. That won't do any good for lung cancer. I'm sorry. Thank you. I've been hearing it count down, five-plex, four-plex, three-plex. It's starting to sound better, but when it gets down to one-plex, then I'll start to be happy. The zoning was changed from almost anything goes to R160 in the neighborhood. It was done for a reason. All these apartments that had grown from multiple, from single-family homes to multiple units have been problems. And that unit has been a problem prior to its burning. And last month, I made the smart alley comment that somebody made the mistake of calling the fire department. And I may have been a little bit smarter than I should have been, but I will not apologize for it, because it is not an ideal place to be made into multiple units. When you take a single-family home and you chop it up, unless you've more or less gut the thing completely, you don't make decent apartments. You make slum dwellings. And that's what this has been, and it's going to continue to be. The neighborhood has been improved greatly. Unit directly across the street from me was converted from five-plex to one, and there's been no problem. It's been very nicely done. The unit on the corner, it used to be the Maria Apartments, I believe it was 10 units. It's now one. It was very nicely done. It has improved the neighborhood greatly. We have had several other properties that have been converted from multiple units to single, and it's improved the neighborhood. It's increased the property value far more than changing the zoning for one unit to get it back on the tax rolls will ever do. And I think that it would be a travesty to convert this into more apartments, which would be problems again. I thank you for bearing with me, but please let the zoning, as it has been changed, to R160 stand. Thank you.
I have two questions for you.
Yes.
Is there any historical significance about this particular home that you're aware of?
Other than it's a, well, it was at one time a nice home. I see that.
Okay. I'm also curious, to the comment that Mr. Crotelli made, as far as it's been on the market, try to be sold for quite a while, and, you know, possibly if it can't, maybe there's a possibility that it'd be taken down at one point in time, and then it would just be a vacant lot. Would that be preferable to the Drake Association to have a vacant lot as opposed to that?
It would be to me. But the house was for sale and could have been bought by a developer that was going to do just that, except Mr. Crotelli's organization sat on it, and it didn't get sold. It didn't get sold, so it's still there. So I see no advantage to doing anything other than sticking with the zoning ordinance as it is.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Mica Molinix, 723 Douglas Avenue. I'm here to represent our company, Des Moines Building and Land, and we own a couple of properties that they're talking about. 2128 University, that we did the 10 units down to one, and 1131 22nd, where we did the five-to-one, single-family dwellings. We did historical rehabs there. The property, 1161, we've actually looked at and met with the city about doing some projects there. Our thoughts were tear it down and build something more accurate in that lot because of the size, because of the density reduction that we do as our company, we buy up some of these around the neighborhood. We're working on two others right now. We're doing a four down to a one, another one that was a four down to a one. So that's kind of our goal for the Drake neighborhood, which I think is the whole Drake's idea and the city's plan that they had a few years ago. So we're supporting that, and our thoughts on this is to keep it either as a single-family or something else. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Jack?
In the reductions that you have done, the four-to-one, the three-to-one, the five-to-one, the 10-to-one, I don't know if those were all accurate, but... Yes, they are. What attracted your attention to those properties, enabling you to devote your resources to those projects? First part of the question. What's missing on the current property?
The focus on this area is, there's two other owners to the company. They were unable to make it tonight, but they've lived in there right now. The other owner lives at 2128 University, him and his family. And he's grown up in the neighborhood his entire life. The other owner lives similar, close by that neighborhood too, and that's something that we've always, I guess, we've worked with some Sherman Hill projects, and we're wanting to bring that back up to the Drake neighborhood. We've met with the city planners quite a bit, ways that we can work with the city to do projects, or just what they're wanting for that neighborhood. And then we just feel that the, I guess, for the Drake area, it's had a lot of problems, and this has helped clean up those issues. And so we feel like the single-family is more or less where it's at, where it needs to be, as opposed to more the multifamilies.
I hear that, but what are the shortcomings of this property to a guy who's an expert in this property conversion and reduction?
So what do we feel like would be an issue with this one?
Sure. Why wouldn't you grab it at a good price, convert it and sell it, and try to make some money?
Well, I know that the cost for this would be very large to have it done right. You'd have to look, go back to, you know, the furnace work, is there asbestos, all that stuff properly removed? I mean, thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then with just the density, you're going to have, like they talked about, parking. Parking's been a big issue up and down that block. I guess we feel like that there could be, you know, with more people, comes more problems, whereas if you, single families are, they're there to live there, stay there, as opposed to people just coming and going, you still have issues with other apartment buildings on that block.
I'm going to keep working on it.
That's fine.
Perhaps you did...
I don't know what, I guess there...
What Jack's asking you is, why can't this one be converted back to a single-family as opposed to tearing it down?
And I've heard...
Oh, no, you could, yeah.
I've heard two things. One, financial aspects to an investor in that property. And two, this thing is a whopper on a postage stamp, and that's a problem.
Right.
Anything else you would put on that short list?
Well, with, I guess, it could be brought back to a single-family, but kind of like they said, it's very large. And with some of the, I guess, with the fire damage, who knows what the structure is like. That's why we had thought about rebuilding something that fits in that size, that's more accurate to the block now.
Well, maybe Mr. Crotelli will sell you the property so you can build something.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Bill Capuccio, 1084 24th Street. I am the chair of the Drake Park Neighbors. I don't want to take blame for this or repeat, and a lot of things you've already heard. I can tell you that I have tried to take and poll some of the other neighbors up and down 22nd Street. I have, of the people I contacted, none that I find who are in favor of the project. We did discuss it at our Drake Park Neighbors... We did discuss it at our Drake Neighbor, Drake Park Neighbors meeting last month. Again, there were several people there from 22nd Street, none of them supported this application for this zoning change. We have yet, this is the first encounter I've had, actually seeing the applicant or any representative from the applicant, they haven't met with our neighborhood group, or for Drake neighborhood for that matter, if I recall. So they haven't met with either group either. And again, as some of the people have said here, there's been a lot of work going on on this street, a lot of really good work. Des Moines Building and Land has converted several buildings from multi down to a single, and there's been two or three others, as I recall, that have also gone in that direction, made a very big improvement in the neighborhood. But I will say, one of the biggest improvements is also when this building had a fire, because it was a very problematic structure. And it was, it was something that was that many less people, or problem people in the neighborhood, once there was a fire and it was boarded up. And so, again, you're talking about the idea of taking and making a rental there, we're talking about how problematic it is, et cetera, for supposedly a single-family. We've heard about several very large single-families that have been made out of prior rentals. There's a structure right behind to the east of this, that used to be a funeral home, that is now a single-family, huge structure, it's a single-family. So again, people are taking some of these large structures, and they're taking and converting them to homes. And the other thing is that, again, we're talking about the number of cars involved with a rental, and we're talking about with a shared driveway. Is that really a smart sort of a situation to be taking, again, perpetuating a rental on a place, on a lot that's that small, with problems with parking to begin with, and then also with a shared driveway? We just don't see this as a good fit for the neighborhood. As for the idea of it becoming a vacant lot, I hate to see an old building go away, but we've had some pretty good luck with vacant lots. We've had some really nice new houses built on vacant lots, and I have a feeling that if that was unfortunately the way this went, I don't think it'd be vacant for long.
Any questions?
I have one.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Not for this gentleman, but probably for staff. He mentioned that the Drake Neighborhood Association has met several times, and the owner and/or representative did not appear. I just wondered if there was an attempt by staff to make them aware that there was such meetings...
Yeah, they've been made aware of it and given a copy of the mailing list. I mean, that's a standard protocol, and then obviously through this process, we've had communication with them and with the neighborhood association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I actually have met with the real estate agent, but we haven't, they haven't met, I think, or the Drake Neighbors Board, so this is an area of shared response, of shared working, so...
Okay.
My clerk will kill me if you don't come to the mic.
I call a few times, it was never an answer, and the way we met is because I went to look for him at his house. I almost killed myself because it was icy. But yeah, I went and never found him at the beginning, so I left messages, never called me back, so, and the reason I went to talk to him is because I want to tell him that we want to meet with them, to spread to them what the subsedos, what's the plan, you know, to meet them and talk to them and see what we've been doing, so they understand that we don't want, we want the same thing, I think, like them in Des Moines. You know, I think, I spend a lot of time in the Drake area, I sell a lot of houses in this area. I was talking the other day with somebody, it can be 11 o'clock midnight, I can be in there and there, and I think the neighborhood is good, it's not that bad. And the houses, they are nice, and a lot of places, like in Main Street 19, they're building apartments, townhouses. So if they want to convert this neighborhood in single-family residential home, why did they give permission to this new house, the new buildings, to be an apartment just behind the street? I think with Drake University and, you know, it's always going to be apartments around the neighborhood. I know they want houses and residential, I understand that, but not everybody can live there when the lots, they are not that large for a family. You convert this house in a single-family, I mean, you're not going to have too much space for that family. I think apartments is going to be really good, and especially if somebody comes with a big plan like the subsedos to remodel everything, to make it, they would be proud of them, they would be proud of that building. And it would be a shame if they want to put that house down, because that houses, they are nice, why wasting it? We don't need to waste any money, we need to fix it, I think. So, but I tried, we tried to meet with them, unfortunately, we didn't have a chance, okay? I just want to say that, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and, is there anybody else to speak in opposition? Anyone else? I'm going to go ahead and ask if you, Mr. Curtelli, need any time for rebuttal?
We actually negotiated over a several-month period with Mr. Molinix as a corporation on, I think, maybe four or five properties, and we were very happy that we were able to do that. Unfortunately, due to, I guess, protracted negotiations between his corporation and the city, that unfortunately, this transaction didn't hold up, so to speak. But anyway, so, after that, we continued to attempt to market the property, and we're back here now, because again, you know, we don't think it's going to happen as a single-family based on the location and the structure. And I would add that I don't, I don't think, and if I'm wrong, I'll be corrected, but I don't believe that any of the immediate neighbors to this property are here speaking in opposition. And I guess I would like to think that they would be the ones that would be immediately impacted by whatever happens with this property, and of course, they were mailed the appropriate notices and have unfortunately viewed this eyesore, which is what it is right now, and it probably will continue to be an eyesore if it's not rezoned. But I don't think they're here, and again, I think I'll be corrected if I'm wrong. Thank you.
I know. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Greg?
Staff, A, B, and C.
Okay. I think we're going to split it out, we'll do A, and then we'll be in C. Trent?
I just want to make a comment. What they want to do with the building, I think would be okay. I couldn't understand how they'd do a four-plex, but a three-plex I could see, but then you stop and think that the Drake Neighborhood Association worked very, very, very hard to develop a neighborhood plan. It was adopted, they're not for this reconstruction. A house that size, it's been burned and everything like that, I just can't imagine the amount of money it would take to redo it to proper stature. I'm having a real difficult problem supporting their project because of the neighborhood plan, the neighbors have already fed, this is not what they want.
Okay. Anything else? Will?
I would like to salute the developer and his thought about doing the renovation of this, of this building, but my recommendation would be to choose another building.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We're going to go ahead and take up item number one, or I guess it's B, which is determine whether proposed rezoning is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan, and staff's recommendation is it is not. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Oh, same sign, acclamation, yes. Now we'll take up C and D, which is amend the 2020 Community Character Plan from low to medium-density to high-density residential, and rezone from R160 to R4, and staff's recommendation is no. Everybody understand that? All those in favor of staff's recommendation, please signify by raising your right hand. Oh, same sign, acclamation, again, yes. Staff's recommendation is adopted.
We'll go to council.
When does it go to the council?
We would have set hearing in two weeks from Monday night.
Okay, so two weeks from Monday night, it'll be going to city council, right?
Set hearing, and the hearing would be the first meeting, I believe, in May.
Okay. If you guys have any questions, you're welcome to contact the community development department staff. Okay, moving on to item number two, request from John Szazinski to rezon property at 1135 Army Post Road. Jason, you presenting on this one?
I hope to be.
Let me stall for you. We're going to, we're asked to be, determine whether the proposed rezoning is in conformance with the 2020 character plan, and amend from low-density residential to commercial auto-oriented small strips, small-scale strip development.
Okay. There's a first time for everything, and tonight's the first time that I've left a file back at the office, so I guess there's a couple options. If you want to move to a different item, I can go get it, maybe Mike could present one of the other items, or vice versa, or we could go...
I can get the file?
Yeah.
Can you go ahead with item three?
Okay. All right, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and move past item two, we'll come back to that. And we'll go to item number three. Item number three is request from Hy-Vee Inc., represented by John Bream, for following actions on property located at 320, 3221 Southeast 14th Street. Determine as to whether or not the proposed amendment to Southgate C4 development plan is in accordance with 2020 Community Character Plan. Amend the Southgate C4 development plan to allow gas station convenience store use at the northwest corner of that site, and review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines for gas stations, convenience stores, to allow development of a 3,000-square-foot store with pump island canopy, providing 16 fueling stations. You got this one, Jason?
I do have this file.
All right, great, thank you.
How embarrassing. Hopefully Mike will forgive me.
Hey, it's fourth and Long Yard.
So as Dan reading the agenda, we have kind of two things going on here. We have the amendment to the C4 plan, and then we also have a site plan. So this map has a couple of boundaries, the larger site that's included in the C4 zoning district along Southeast 14th, Indianola Avenue, east part to the north, and then up in the corner is the vicinity of the convenience store, and then the site plan, the focus of the site plan. Looking back at the corner, where the convenience store would be located, back towards the Hy-Vee, looking east and southward, this is within the site, looking to the north, down the southeast 14th Street corridor. Response map and a couple of emails are going, the cards are going around, but this is the I'll start by showing the plan, or the, excuse me, C4 plan in its entirety, and then we'll focus in on the convenience store. So we have the existing buildings, the parking to the front and the back, existing restaurant with the C store up in the north on Park. Just to point out, it's probably the staff recommendation, we're suggesting that some of the open space requirements from the convenience store design guidelines be met down in this part of the site, and we've been talking to the applicant about that, and I think we can work through that. They were showing a couple, they're in between the store and the C store site. With that, I'll go ahead and switch to the site plan. And voila, we have color. So the store up along in the corner, part to the north, this is the area detention with access to the storm sewer system, sidewalk access to East 14th. There are, there's pretty much no sidewalks east of East 14th along Park Avenue, there is a city plan that installs some on the north side, so sidewalk connection along the south side of Park Avenue is not a concern as far as looking at site development for the site plan. Fueling location to the south of the building along the East 14th corridor. Some renderings showing the submitted design in color. And then the canopy elevations and trash enclosure elevations. We are recommending approval of this, and I'll just go ahead and jump right to the staff recommendation. We've had a conversation with the applicant, I believe that we're pretty well in agreement on most things. I think they have some concerns, some questions about the windows on the west elevation that faces 14th Street, and then the north that faces Park. These obviously are storage internal kind of spaces. Staff, we were suggesting kind of an upper level, not a clear storage window, but something that's high enough that you can still store below, but would allow daylight and then light from within the building to exit, kind of a greater feel towards the street of interaction, so it's not kind of just a blank wall. What they're showing is the spandrel glass, you know, it's not, it's a, it's a solid wall behind it. So I'll let them kind of talk through some options they had. They'd mentioned perhaps doing the windows as we described, but painting them black, I'll let them present what their thoughts are. We still believe that something that could be, could be done there. The other kind of larger item is we had some concerns with vehicles stacking and people exiting, and then coming in and wanting to immediately turn here, and I believe we sorted that out with them, that they can get their truck movement to go this way, and so that's not a concern. That was one of our larger conditions. Some other thoughts that we had is the ice facility or outdoor ice chest, so we're in this area, thought that there's an opportunity to move that over on this side and kind of shift things around, just to kind of make the views along the corridor higher quality, kind of a front door appearance. So with that, be happy answering any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Please come forward. Give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is David Bailey, I'm with Hy-Vee, address is 5820 West Town Parkway in West Des Moines, Iowa. I'm here on behalf of John Bream, who has made the application. I just wanted to touch briefly on a few things, and then would love the chance to come back up and address any concerns that are brought up after my presentation. In addition, I have Randy Downs here with me, who's from our engineering department, he'll, he'll address some of these other staff comments. Just to give you a little bit of background, we've been in this neighborhood community since 1966, and we relocated over to the Southgate Shopping Center in 1994, and so we're coming up on 20 years at that location. We've been in that community a long part of time, and the reason I'm telling you that we're coming up on the end of our 20-year lease is because that provided us an opportunity to approach a landlord about having a C store at this location. And I know you've watched all of our stores develop, and that's a very integral part of our business today, and so it's important for us to have a C store at this location, especially as we look forward to remodeling this store. And so with that, we have a six-month option with the landlord in order to gather all of our approvals. And so we're glad to be here tonight, and we look forward to your consideration on this, because our option expires the end of this month. As you mentioned, the convenience store is about 3,000 square feet. The hours of operation will be from 5:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night. There will be the option of a 24-hour pay at the pump, if that's allowed by the city. We'll offer the typical convenience store items that many of the other convenience stores offer, but we do offer something different, and that's this fuel saver program that we've developed, and that is primarily designed to reward our loyal customers. And so a lot of the traffic coming to this will be existing traffic within the... And so, a lot of the traffic coming to this will be existing traffic within our shopping center, the existing trip customers buying groceries at the store and then stopping at the C store on the way home. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on Thursday, March 21st. We sent out 42 invitations, and out of that, there were four households represented that attended the meeting to express some concerns about the operation of the store and, and the condition of the store and the age of the store, and we had a good discussion with the neighbors. We discussed a lot of their concerns. While I don't necessarily agree with all of their, their comments, I will agree that the store is old, it's about 20 years old, it's, it's worn, it's tired, and it's in need of remodeling, and this is a great opportunity to start that off. I would like to talk about some things that some of the neighbors might not be aware of, because they did admit that they hadn't been in the store for many months, and a couple of them had said even years they had not shopped in the store. But we've remodeled the customer service department, we've added a postal substation, we've added all-new check lanes to the front of the store, and new cash register system, a new kitchen dining area has just been remodeled, we've updated the lighting throughout the store, we painted the interior walls on the sales floor, purchased 250 new grocery carts, we've added a dietitian to our staff, which has been an integral part of a lot of our stores, we've increased the fresh food offering, we put a brand-new roof on the store, and while that's probably not real important, it does show that our intent is to stay at this location and continue to reinvest in the property. We purchased a power washer that we use on a continuous basis for the cleaning of the can redemption and other areas. We have an updated camera system there with 52 cameras. We've added an eye wireless kiosk. We're getting ready to put in new ceiling in the food court area from the kitchen all the way back to the bakery, and we're also planning to install an underground car containment system, which is very similar to like a pet containment system that you'd have in your yard, with the exception that grocery carts are passing this perimeter, and then when they do pass the perimeter, the wheels lock up on the carts, which will help keep the carts on-site, because I know that's been one of the neighbors' concerns about carts getting out into the neighborhood. This convenience store, as I mentioned, is a very integral part of our business today, and as you know, we just are not building new stores today without convenience stores. It's that important to us to have the convenience store as a part of that store. So, subject to receiving approval by the city, we tentatively scheduled this store to be remodeled starting in October 2014, and so we'll do a complete remodel of the inside of the store, which hasn't been done, put a brand-new front on the store, make any other improvements that are required out in the parking lot, and hopefully, we'll have a brand-new store for this, this part of town. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Randy to come up, and he can review with you the site plan and, and any of the staff comments, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is Randy Downs at Hy-V Engineering Department, same address as David. He wanted me just to come up briefly and go over the site plan. I think staff did a good job of explaining it in general, coming into this existing corner of that lot that's not well utilized. We look at aerial photos, and there's very few cars parked in that area. As David explained, is, is, this store is considered a department of the grocery store. We currently have 111 fuel stations in our 233 stores throughout the chain. We did work with staff, talking with Mr. Ludwig this afternoon and the traffic department about one of the comments about closing that access. We've come up with some alternates, and we've explored that with our operations and management officials in our office, and they've agreed to that comment, so we'll, we'll be restricting that aisle in there. And basically, if you come in northbound, this driveway today is in northbound, there's a left turn into the site, but you can't access out. You'd have to come in and go down through the drive aisles and around. We've agreed to that item. I just, we agree with all the, the conditions on the staff recommendation. As I said, we've worked with the staff on the open space number four. We agree with number five to relocate the ice chest and the propane exchange, and then the access, number two. I just want to clarify on number six. Mike and I talked today about the windows. When we had the pre-application originally, the staff at that time told us that windows were required on the street furnitures. So, I'm a little confused whether that's requirement as for architectural requirements of the, the C store design guidelines, or if that's just for tax abatement. And I brought some information here, as Mike and I discussed today on the phone. I brought the floor plan. I don't know if the colors show up. This is an overhead view of the building and the insides of the store, with the main, the main entry here on the south, you come in. This west wall and a third, a little bit over a third of the back wall is all the cooler area. You walk up to the doors, so it's all cooler space, and this is where we have two windows along the west side, and then on the back, we have three windows. Well, two of the three windows are in the, the back room area, where we have all the bag-in-the-box pop system that feeds the fountain drinks. So, if you imagine walking in the back area, if you're walking down this hallway, it's a dead-end hallway, the pink representing the separation of sales floor from the back room area, you come to this area, overhead, there's a rack with all of those pop lines over to the, I think it's a 24-head dispenser, and that's right in the area where we talk about having windows. We also have some shelving, and they typically stack large boxes all the way up with cups for refill, et cetera. And so, operations is, this is the prototypical store that we have now that we're building most of our locations if we can. They've asked that we put in these, the architects called them spandrel glass, and I want to, he was unable to attend tonight, but I just want to clarify, it's the same window as the other windows, but they paint the inside paint. So, it's double glass, argon sealed windows with argon gas, they paint the backside, and then there's a plywood or the drywall wall goes over that. And then the cooler is constructed against those windows along the west and north. In the back area, again, it's, it's drywall or plywood in that area to prevent any of the windows being broken from inside activities. I also brought some of the photos of the inside store that show, again, that pink line on the drawing represent the divide line between the, the sales floor and the back room. These pictures are from our newest store out in Urbana, or Waqee, I believe, and this store's mirrored, so if you look at this, this is, this would be the west wall of the proposed store, but it's, it's a different wall when you walk in on the right-hand side of this store.
Forgive me for interrupting you, but I'm looking at your floor plan. If you put your floor plan out there, all you really need to do is swap the coolers, which is exactly what's done in the photograph, right? Then that other area becomes light area, right? I mean, I'm trying to figure this out. If you, if you swap your, if you swap your coolers over to the right-hand side of this diagram as I'm looking at it, then the outside area are the, where the windows are supposed to be would become windows, right?
They have the typical layout that they've identified for, for, for flow of traffic, and their sales, their sales goals on, on the typical layout. So, we have this, this pink, pink area that separates those sales area, and then, as I explained to Mike today, then we get into this decor package above the coolers, where they have the standard colors, signage. Here's the back wall, where they suggested have three windows. We have all this signage above, all the fountain drinks above the coolers that wrap around the back wall, as well as over here where the fountain drinks are themselves, and there's ice coolers that go almost all the way up to the ceiling behind that wall, and it's right, be right in front of that window along that north wall. So, I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah. I think, I think basically, it's a tax abatement standard for the windows to be on the, the street side. What we talked with them about today was, this is additional information, we'll take that into consideration in evaluating our comments on that at that time. I don't, I don't know if the commission really needs to delve into the, the windows on the, on the exterior of the building. It is a tax abatement question, so.
We appreciate if that, that motion could reflect that comment as he discussed. Otherwise, we'd ask, answer any questions you might have, and appreciate your support of this project.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak? I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application?
I thought Mr. Bailey was going to have a, oh, is he going to, I mean, as a rebuttal? I had a question of him.
Oh, you did? Before he, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Or I could ask, I could ask the engineer.
I'm sorry, Will, I didn't realize that.
Sorry. Would you refer to drawing A 3.0, please? It's the, it's the one with the elevations? Yeah. My question has to do with signage. This one shows a Hy-V gas sign on the south elevation, but no signage on the north elevation or the west elevation or the east elevation. Is that the plan that Hy-V proposes to implement?
We have a new layout that we've worked with our sign vendor and our operations team, and I did not have time to bring it tonight. The only change, in my understanding through staff, that the signage is a separate permitting process. They would like to add on the north elevation a fuel pricing sign, if allowable by code. So, it'd be on the backside of the building, the west side of that north face.
How does that work, Mike?
The signage is through separate permitting, through the permit and development centers. They earn signage based on their frontage along a public street. They have two street furnitures, so I would assume they would be able to have a, a fuel pricing sign on their building.
On the north, then what about on the east and the west?
None.
Nothing?
None's proposed at this time.
I ask because we've gotten plans lately that have signs on every square inch of the property, and I'd like the secretary to record the fact that the, of just exactly what you've said and promised. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Christine, did you have a question?
That's okay.
Will.
Sorry, Randy Downs, Hy-V Engineering Department.
I'm sorry. Didn't realize that.
Sorry.
Christine, did you have something? Question? No? Anyone? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got your question answered, Will?
Yes.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none, those in opposition to the application, would you please come forward? In opposition? Thank you, ma'am. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Carol Jones, and I live at 1603 Pioneer Road. I'm the Pioneer Park Neighborhood Association president. I actually didn't know if I should get up and to speak in favor of this or, or to oppose it, because Pioneer Park has actually tried very hard to always support our businesses, whether they're expanding or renovating a building or a new business moving in. The southeast 14th corridor needs these types of things very badly, as everyone is well aware. So, we're always excited to hear about a business that wants to expand and is proposing something like this. However, we do have concerns about this shopping center in particular, and the concerns that we have in doing this expansion have to do with the overall maintenance of the shopping center, the store, the Hy-V store in particular, and I understand there have been some improvements made lately, and I have not been in the store recently, so I need to go in and, and look around. But the condition of the parking lot, the condition, it needs to be resurfaced, restriked. It is always full of litter. There are carts everywhere. The can and bottle redemption area is an absolute disaster. And I guess, you know, I spoke to many of our members and actually members of other neighborhoods, surrounding neighborhood associations, because there are several of our associations around this Hy-V, and I got pretty much the same response from everyone, and that is that they thought it was a good idea, but what about the traffic? You know, this is an extremely busy intersection, and we also, right at the same time, we have a new CVS pharmacy going in right across the street. So, especially traffic on Park Avenue, it backs up now. If we add these, this expansion plus another new store, what is that going to do? There was mention of the northbound, or I'm sorry, southbound cut across. That cut across on that median, that doesn't work. It doesn't work now, and it's not gonna work as that gets busier. People will pull out, and they'll pull out right in the middle of traffic and just block two lanes of traffic. It's ridiculous. You know, that was somebody's nightmare that that even went in there. I don't know, I, I really hope that the, you know, there's a traffic study done on this. Another concern we have is there are many mature trees in the shopping center, and we did ask at the meeting, the presentation meeting that Hy-V had for us, and didn't feel that we really got a clear answer about the trees. So, we didn't know if they are going to need to take some of the trees out that are there. They've been there for many years, so we were, you know, did have some questions about that. I guess our, our basic overall concern is, if this is going to work, it'll be great, but considering the condition that everything has been in over the last several years, if there's a new store, because this was a nice new store 20 years ago, and it went steadily downhill, is that what's going to happen to this? This will be a, a nice new C store and gas station, is this going to get run down? You know, we'll, we'll try to be as supportive as we can be, as long as, you know, some of these concerns are met.
Anything else?
No.
Questions, ma'am, please. Christine, did you have something?
This is the store that has the Veridian credit union in it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. There have been a lot of improvements made in that store. I bank at Veridian and, and have been going to the store for the past maybe year, and there have been a lot of improvements made, and it's great. I agree with the concerns about the, the parking lot. Sometimes it's kind of scary and very congested, but one of the, I want to know two things, actually primarily. It sounds as if your neighborhood association hasn't taken a formal position on this, correct?
We want to support it, actually.
Okay. And then the second question, for the concerns about the cleanliness, the safety, some of those other things, has your neighborhood association sent any kind of formal communication of concern to Hy-V management to try to address those?
We had not. I had talked with, at one time, and this has been a while back, I talked with the general manager, and I just found out very recently, in fact, last week, that there is a new general manager at this Hy-V, which can make all the difference in the world. You know, sometimes that's exactly where the problem is at, and I'm not saying that's, that was the problem, but it could have been. So, you know, we are hopeful that this will be a great improvement for an area that needs improving, and we, we want to support it, but we wanted to have our concerns heard also.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Uh huh.
Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street. We've not had, I'm president of Eastern Lake Area Neighborhood Association. We've not had a meeting, so I'm not here representing the neighborhood as such, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it. This was the first I've seen these plans. Unfortunately, we were not invited to the neighborhood meeting, even though our border is right along Evergreen, just to the north edge of this, so this is the first I've seen it. So, I have a couple of concerns. The signage, which they talked a little bit about, is important relative to monument signing or something that looks nice. I was concerned about, I didn't know which way the building was facing. Now that I see the backside is north and on Park Avenue, I was concerned about what that would look like from the street. I, I am concerned about general maintenance in, in this, because as much as they have done inside the store, and I was just in the store Sunday and Monday both of this week, so I've seen the inside, if you go in the south door, it's hard to get in the store to get past the smell, so that's immaterial of this, but it's very difficult to get in the store that way to get past that. I would, the, the traffic is a concern at this intersection. Forget about this store. As everybody knows, this is one of the 10 worst accident intersections in the city. One of the things I would have hoped to have had discussed was a possibility somewhere, somebody funding an extra turn lane, so as you would be going east, there would be actually a right-hand turn lane, because it does back up the first, there's two entries there on the north side of this lot. First one's very close to the intersection. As people turn the corner to go there, they start slowing down to turn into Hy-V, and it backs up, backs up into the intersections. Certain, it's one of the reasons there's accidents at that intersection. Certain, it's one of the reasons there's accidents at that intersection. Also, there is no sidewalk, as they talked about. There's plans for a sidewalk on the north side, but there's a lot of foot activity in this area because of the number of apartments, both down Park to the east, to the north, up near Evergreen, and to the west, over on Indianola, between Park and Indianola there. So I would like to see them reconsider possibility of putting sidewalk on the north side, I mean, the south side of this, even though there's some plan for the north side. And then that addresses all the things I think that I've seen. Thank you.
Okay. Please give us your name and address.
Debbie Jorgensen, 5500 Southeast 1st Court. Basically, Jim touched on most of my concerns. Park Avenue is just too congested, and I see here that it appears that fuel delivery trucks would be able to enter and exit the site from Park Avenue. I cannot see how that's possible. How you're gonna be having a fuel truck turning in and out on Park Avenue? That is just ridiculous. I mean, I don't see it's possible at all. The other thing is, I also agree with Jim. I think that sidewalks should be required. It's a very heavily trafficked area. And if you're gonna be making some changes in here, I think sidewalks should be required.
Before you leave, ma'am?
Yes.
Any questions? Thank you. And your name would be?
Tim Fitzgerald, Chair, Commission. I cannot vote, I'm gonna abstain from this vote, but I do have a concern as a neighborhood leader. Jim brought it up, I just wanna reiterate. We are having sidewalks put in on the north side of Park Avenue going east and west. And I didn't realize this till I saw the plans earlier, and I apologize for not bringing it up to you sooner. I think it, there should be, if you do consider passing this, could we have an amendment to put a sidewalk in on this side of the street? There is a school just, just west, a block from that corner. And there are also an apartment complex right behind the store where smaller children, we use that side of the street to go to a small elementary school that's just northeast from there. So that's pretty important, or not northeast, northwest, excuse me. So please consider a sidewalk, see if Hy-Vee will consider putting in a sidewalk with their plan. So that's it, thanks.
Tim, wait a minute. Does anyone have any question? I have a question. And part of it's of staff. I've heard several comments about traffic and transportation studies. I'm gonna ask staff, do we have any traffic and transportation studies on this area at all?
As part of their submission, they did submit a trip generation model for the proposed development that was reviewed by the Traffic and Transportation Division, as mentioned in the staff report. So there has been some analysis with regard to that. The other that I wanted to point out was with regard to the sidewalk. Those are kinda similar thoughts that we had with staff, but then we looked at the width of the right-of-way along, at least along the C-store. It's about curb to property line, it's about six feet wide, and there are several mature trees. So if we're putting a sidewalk in, we're taking trees out. I think the fairer question is maybe we talk to Hy-Vee when they start redoing the store and the major part of their site, to have sidewalk connection within the site. We just really don't have the space within the right-of-way on the south side of Park.
Now, Tim, do you have concerns about the traffic situation, too?
I do, Mr. Chair. However, there are mature trees here, and I have been in, I have been in areas that actually will use a larger sidewalk and have the trees go right through the middle of them. Even downtown, you see it all the time. That way, I don't think the trees need to be mitigated or taken down. Just a wider sidewalk, perhaps, just a thought. What they're talking about is this area right here at...
That's Park.
Yes. At seven in the morning, well, there, this is a huge problem, too. At seven in the morning, there'll be cars here at Park Avenue and 14th, probably a good quarter mile down here, waiting to proceed at this light. The left turn lane isn't, is, I don't think it's an actual lane, it's just, it goes straight or turn. And it's on for probably four seconds max, it's on a loop. So maybe two or three cars will squeak by before the cars that are on coming towards them. When we first opened the store, 1560, 1994, I believe, geez, 20 years ago, we hired a police officer off-duty just to get cars in and out of the approach that would be about right here, because the store sits here.
Right.
So, yeah, it's, it's, they did have, they are working with a traffic study, but I think something needs to be a little more solidified and teeth dug in just a little bit better.
My concern wasn't so much Park, although that's a big concern, too. I'm looking at 14th, and obviously, traffic that's on the right-hand side can get in and out of 14th. But if you've got traffic moving up 14th and trying to get, I mean, dart into this rabbit hole, so to speak, what's gonna happen once they hit that, I don't know?
We have two problems. And again, I'm not sure if it's, the city engineer needs to go out there and actually time the lights differently. Again, they had a study done, and I believe that study was done, but I don't think it was an onsite study where the actual cars are counted individually and see what happens during a rush hour period. But you're right, the turn lane that is here is, the island was put in there, so across the street where there's a business couldn't shoot across any longer. So they have only one way to get out. This lane has one way to get in. And it's common knowledge that this is probably one of the most dangerous intersections in the state, so whatever we can do to mitigate traffic a little bit safer.
Okay.
But as a neighborhood leader, I think everybody is really comfortable with what Hy-Vee's doing and like to see this store happen, just a little more thought put behind the safety of that traffic.
Right. Thank you. Have any other, I'm sorry, did I, anybody have questions with Tim before you?
Tim, I really support the staff in regards to the sidewalk and the remodel. It's, it would be a disaster to take those mature trees out of there. They appear healthy.
They are, they're beautiful trees.
Well, it's not just the beauty. Trees are, offer us more, and everybody knows what that is now. Clean air, healthier kids, I mean, safer neighborhoods. I mean, we, it goes on and on. So I think to wait a little bit longer and work with the company to put the sidewalk inside of the property, if they're willing to do that, would be more of a solution than just rip out some more mature trees.
I think you're talking two trees total.
That's okay. Two trees, they have enormous value.
I understand, but again, I think that these could just be wrapped around with the, you know, I don't know if you need to get relief from Board of Adjustments for something like that, but I guess I'm just trying to use a common sense way to correct a problem that's, that could be potentially huge. You know, I would hate to see a kid get pushed out, I mean, when the junior high or the middle school gets out, they don't go across the street to the north side, they walk through here.
Perhaps the tree would keep the child in.
You think so?
That's, that would be poor, too.
Thanks. Trying to adjust on them. Do you have questions with Tim?
Not for Tim, no.
Okay. We'll get back to you in a minute. All right. Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, you need some rebuttal time.
As far as the fuel truck, that was one item we've looked intensely at in our organization. And then when Traffic made the recommendation to close that driveway, we are concerned about that truck traffic. So now we've gone back. Ultimately, we'll probably move the underground fuel tanks out further to the south, easier access to get those trucks in there. So we've looked at that. That's why we were reluctant to agree to that consideration, to close that driveway down, but we have looked at that. Invitations to the neighborhood meeting, we did not invite the three other neighborhood associations. When it was first, when we first went to the application meeting, I think it was even discussed by staff that, you know, this is a commercial use in an existing commercial shopping center along a very commercial corridor. And it's, I think it's in the pre-op meetings that is recommended, and not required for the C4 zoning. So we did not, we apologize, we did not invite the other three neighborhoods that overlap, and I wasn't sure about the chartered versus designated versus the other classification on neighborhood associations. As far as existing trees, currently, the plan to add, with adding these three additional landscape islands shown there on the other side of the drive aisle as part of our open space requirement, these three here, staff has recommended, or part of the motion is to add some additional ones here to meet our requirement for open space. So right now, with those three islands, we're taking out one tree here, and we're moving one tree over here where the new pavement is, as part of the project. We're leaving all the perimeter trees. We were asked to burn them along 14th Street, but that falls off, and those existing trees are there, so we left them alone, but shrubs between them. We are not touching the trees along Park. So right now, there's two trees to remove from the interior islands with the reconstruction of the parking lot. And I think I highlighted most of the concerns. Anything else, David?
How much do you want to talk about? I have just already been discussed.
Randy, let me ask you something. I have a question here. Was there any consideration to moving the C-store more into the center of the shopping center area there and avoiding all the problems you're gonna raise on Park and 14th Street? And that's a very large shopping center. You've got Indianola on one side, Park on the other side.
Right. We have, this is the drawing of the overall plan of center here, with red indicating the boundary. The hatching indicates the existing Hy-Vee store, goes all the way down here. This list line here, horizontal line separating the wine spirits from the grocery store area, here's our proposed development. We have lease requirements, lease rights, down to this, I think it's center line of this driveway, just to the north, the driveway north of the existing old country, country kitchen.
Right.
Mexican restaurant. The landlord is currently working with another business and trying to renovate that. So our lease limit goes to here, our front doors are here. We'd like to preserve some of that, you know, prime parking in relationship to that door. We did look at putting it on this location. Our operations team preferred it here as well as the landlord, because it would block some of the visibility to the other tenants directly south of the Hy-Vee store in the center.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry. All right. Thank you, Randy. Let me get to you. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and Mike has some comments with respect to traffic and transportation stuff.
Mr. Chairman, again, just to draw your attention to the staff report, and I apologize, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm only relying on what our traffic engineering department has provided in their review comments, and that information was provided in the staff report. But as Jason did point out, they did submit a, it's noted on page three of the staff report under sub-paragraph three, the applicants engineer had prepared, submitted a trip generation and distribution analysis for the proposed convenience store. Our traffic and transportation division has reviewed the information and determined that the existing street system can support the proposed development. I guess what I would point out on the site plan, just overall, I don't believe they're changing any of their existing access points that are already there for the center. So they're fitting those within the existing center. You know, I don't know that necessarily moving this elsewhere in the site really changes the traffic. There's still gonna be traffic generated on the site, so ultimately, this allows them to utilize the existing driveways. And I would just point out that Park Avenue is not the only access. There's three access points on Park Avenue. There's two, or at least one on Southeast 14th Street, and then one down the south on Indianola Avenue. And assume as a shopping center, there are cross-access easements across this entire center. So there's multiple points of egress and ingress onto the site that I think can be utilized by people. What we've asked for, again, is on the south boundary, as you come off of Southeast 14th Street, rather than having conflicts backing onto Southeast 14th Street, they would have to come in south of that existing median that's in the parking row to come to the internal north-south drive to enter into the C-store. So traffic and transportation's only concern was not having cars just pull immediately off Southeast 14th and then try and make a left into the C-store site because of conflicts with oncoming cars and potential backup onto 14th Street. So from that perspective, traffic and transportation believes it's suitable, and I think on the site, it's demonstrated they have multiple access points. The only other thing that I wanted to address, I think, was probably the sidewalk question. And again, page five of the staff report, Jason pointed out, we did initially, as planning staff, suggest a sidewalk or discuss a sidewalk on the south side. And Jason, I don't know if there's the aerial photo that shows, but I don't believe there's any sidewalk along Park Avenue, period. So once you get past the grocery store, there's no sidewalk connecting at any further east of this site. And what traffic and transportation said is, due to the width of the right-of-way, the plan is to put the sidewalk on the north side of Park Avenue. So they, in the staff report, noted it is planned on the north side, and a sidewalk along the south side is not planned, given the narrow width of the right-of-way. So we went with their comments, did not require the sidewalk on the south side with the hope that that north side will be constructed, the wide-of-way, the, I don't believe the street is exactly centered, maybe in the right-of-way, and there's a little bit more room on the north. So probably not an ideal situation, but that is the comment that we received from traffic and transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. CJ?
Mike, tell us where the CVS is going in relation on this?
Due north.
Due north, okay. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if I've done that, but I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we need a motion. Ted?
Move staff.
All right. Staff's been moved, and actually, you're gonna, you're gonna break it down, right? It's actually, it's actually, the first part is find that it's in conformance with the 2020 community character plan, and then we'll take up the other parts after that B and C together.
That's precisely what I meant.
I know that. You're just brilliant.
I think so.
Okay. Any discussion? That's what I'm opening for.
About whether Ted's brilliant?
We know he's, we know he's brilliant. Absolutely. Joanne?
I, yeah.
I tried. I tried.
This is for, this is for staff, the traffic and transportation. Is there any thought to restricting access from 14th to only northbound traffic? The southbound traffic, trying to cut across in that opening, is a disaster point. If it's coming south on 14th, it needs to go down to Indianola Road or turn on Park Avenue, which would be just as easy because it's very, very close to Park Avenue. And then the access could be used just for northbound.
What I'd like to offer up, 14th being a state highway, it's a little more complicated and just working with our traffic, is maybe what I'd suggest is we take some of the concerns that we heard tonight and provide them to our traffic and transportation division to look at closer, kind of independent of this project, because really, a lot of what I've heard tonight sounds more like system-wide kind of issues and not, I mean, it's happening in this vicinity, but it's part of the system that should be looked at in that perspective, and not so much tied to this particular motion.
I'm not seeing any real objections to the project. However, the traffic is a problem to the neighbors. Also, I had a question, of course, it's way too late for this, but that restaurant, that would have been a good option for putting this facility. It would have been in the center of it, rather than on the north or in the south corner, right next to a traffic placement. So, and just another comment for Hy-Vee. You were mentioning this, that, and the other thing for your improvements. To me, the greatest respect that you can show your people, not only is maintenance of the store, which had been lacking for a number of years, hopefully shall be no more. of the store, which had been lacking for a number of years, hopefully shall be no more, but what you do with your bathrooms. Good lord, those bathrooms are disgusting sometimes. So if that can be something that you definitely work on as an issue, if you, any business that offers restrooms should respect the people that may have to use them, and it's not respecting the people when they look like junk. So, that's what I had to say.
Any, any other comments? I, I have comments. My dad grew up over in this area. My grandmother used to live right down the street from the store, and I'm real familiar with it. I'm concerned. I had the same, had the same concerns when they built the Quick Trip over on Douglas and Frederick Hubbell. We're gonna put 16 pump stations in. We're gonna have tons and tons of activity above and beyond what we're dealing with with the store that's currently in existence. We think traffic is bad now, it's gonna get worse. If you build it, they will come. I said at the time when we did the one on Douglas and Frederick Hubbell that we were gonna slaughter people, and we've killed two already. I don't wanna see that happen here. I know that I, that I'm, you know, voice crying in the wilderness sorta thing, but I can't support it for that very reason. I, I look at this thing, and we've got a cookie cutter type of operation. This is what we've done in every other place. Well, this place is unique. And matter of fact, every one of them is unique. And I understand certainly that the city of Des Moines builds, when they build their schools, they build them in duplicate form. And I understand that it's more efficient to build things duplicate, but when you're dealing with human life, I think it's, it's time to step up and use your brain. And I don't think that's been done in this case. And like I said, I can't support it. I will support, however, that it, that it's in conformance with 2020, but I can't, I can't support the site plan. Any other questions or any comments? Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call this to a vote.
I have a question first. How do we handle Jason's suggestion in terms of traffic studies and so forth?
Staff will do that.
They're gonna do that outside, outside of this whole thing. That's what, that's what Jason was just saying. And that was what Mike was saying. We're gonna be looking at that, but the city's gonna take that independent of what we're doing here. Okay. All those in favor of staff's recommendation that it's in conformance with Des Moines 2020 community character plan, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Okay. Acclamation cap. Will take up B and C, recommends approval of the amendment to the Development Department site plan, along with the conditions. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose? Me. I'm it. I'm the only opposition. It passes. Thank you. Item two, that's right, we did three. I'm looking at it, I'm going, what's? Item number two is John Szysinski to rezone property at 1135 Army Post Road. Jason, are you presenting on this now? We give you a hard time, I'm sorry. You guys do a wonderful job, seriously. You, you worked your tail feathers off, and we, I know for, I for one appreciate all the hard work that you guys put into this.
And it was a nice day for Mike to go for a walk. I'm glad he came back.
There you go.
I thought about it.
Yeah, he could've easily ended up at Zombie Burger.
Yeah.
The other thing that, this, this back is falling off, so I'm like, I'm not sure I should've been here tonight.
It still works.
There we go. Cards are being passed around. This is the response map. Subject property along Army Post Road. There's, I can zoom in here a little bit. So you have Army Post, southwest 12th, it's located on the northeast corner. The back part that's proposed for rezoning here. Front part already being zone C2. This is just a close-up. We've had some ongoing enforcement activity. This proposal would help get the applicant headed in the right direction. Certainly wouldn't allow for some of the other junk and debris and other kind of industrial-type storage uses that would occur. Oh, now you did it. I know.
What is it?
So this is looking back into that area that's zoned, R160. There was an extension of parking for customer parking, site plan done prior to, to the standard that requires it to come before you. And this is looking back from the site, but that did not allow for any, any real intense commercial uses that the applicants hoping to use, utilize that area for. It is along, like I said, the Army Post Road corridor. You know, taking that into consideration, the adjoining property being zone C2, just kind of the, the sense of the area. We are recommending approval, however, we have some conditions and some limitations. I'll just go ahead and jump right to those. So, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R160 to a limited C2, subject to the following conditions. The use of the property shall be limited to the following: residential uses allowed in the R2 district, commercial uses allowed in the C0 district, and then accessory off-street parking uses for the adjoining C2 use. Also, that that rear area, the proportion to be rezoned being brought in conformance with the current landscaping standards. And, you know, the, our, in the development of, of the city, our landscaping and buffering standards are relatively new, but there's a good reason for those, provide transition for residential uses in this, in this case, which we have to the north of the site. So we feel that it's important, as part of this, to bring the site up into conformance. And then last, that any future development of the property shall conform with the site plan as approved by the permitted development center. So happy answering your questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant present? Please come forward.
You want to go to the walk? Zombie Burger.
We don't have an applicant?
I, I've never met the applicant personally, so I don't...
Uh-huh. Okay. Is the applicant, and I show John Szysinski as John here, or a representative for John Do I have a motion? Joanne?
I would like to see this denied. Let's see, the city is saying it. I would like to see this go to the board of adjustment. This does intrude too far into the neighborhood for me to want to rezone anything.
Is that your motion?
That would be my motion.
To avoid a situation that we had like last month, I might suggest a continuance for two weeks to at least have some statement from the applicant at the hearing.
Sounds good.
Whatever works.
Well, we got your motion. You wanna withdraw your motion?
Not particularly, but...
Well, we can vote it down, and then...
Yeah.
I know, that's, that's what I'm saying, but you wanna, or do you wanna withdraw it? We can continue it, and you can bring it up the next time, or...
Well, we probably should have the person here. However, I just, I won't vote for it either. I, I will withdraw.
Okay. All right. Motion's been withdrawn. Is there a motion to continue this?
I move for continuous.
All right. Continue to the next, the next meeting, which is, we got 14, 20, or 18th? 18th? So it'll be brought back up again on the 18th. I know you folks are here on this particular item, are you not?
No.
No? This isn't yours? Okay. They're on four, I'm sorry. Okay. Is there anyone here on, on this item? I know you are.
Hundred for four.
Okay.
Let's read that.
All right. I'm gonna bring it, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor of continuing this till the 18th, please signify by raising your right hand. April 18th, yeah. Oppose, same sign. Okay. Thank you. Continue to the, to the 18th.
That's why they need to, that's why we need to have it here.
All right.
But you didn't have to take that walk, did you? You left it at your office.
Moving right along.
Here you go.
Item number four is request from Kating Properties, represented by Kerry Ramsey, to amend the Meadowlands PUD conceptual plan for property located at 7400 Meadowlands Drive to revise the configuration of seventy, seventy residential units permitted on the property from seven two-story multifamily dwellings to thirty-five single-story two-family dwellings. The subject property is owned by J.K.M. Partners LLC. Jason, you presenting on this one?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Response cards are being passed around. This is the response map. Aerial showing the subject property, the PUD with the specific part of the PUD we're discussing up in the corner, Southridge Boulevard, Bloomfield Road, Indianola Avenue, southeast part of, of the city. There is, there's an existing plan on the books that this would amend. I'll just show this really quickly. What's...
Could you put the words at the top?
Oh, sure.
I like north at the bottom, so...
Anyway, what to point out here is, these are two-story buildings with a total of seventy units. So the proposal is kind of reconfiguring the game plan for this area into one-story units with, down to a total of thirty-five. The staff recommendation, since this gone out, the applicant this afternoon did submit a new sheet that's working towards our, our recommendation. I believe there's some, still some things that aren't there yet. We haven't done a full analysis, so I, I wanna clarify before I get going that even, even though that maybe some of the conditions that are in our recommendation perhaps have been clarified here, I'd still hope that you would keep them in there, just to make sure, 'cause like I said, this has come in late today, so we haven't really had the opportunity to do a thorough detail. Point the drawing to the north. So this is the quadrant to the north. There's a imposed view over an aerial, and actually, that's not, let me see if I can lighten that up a little bit. There we go. So you'd come in from this, this drive on the corner, there's a couple of drive points. Come in, and then there's this circular road that takes you around, past the duplex units, you have a double-loaded street, essentially, some green space. One of the comments that we had is that their initial, just the middle showed, have a park space off in this corner. We felt that needed to be in a place that's more central to the, the facility, easier to keep eyes on, easier for kids to get to. I believe they're proposing to perhaps move it here, but I'll let them describe that in greater detail. The other thing why I have kind of this master plan up is, we do have a comment from the fire department that's really, it's fire code-related, so it's, has to be met. It's not something that we can alleviate from a zoning standpoint, but they do need to provide a second means of egress in and out of the, the development for the number of units. And this one, they have two here, but they're too close to meet the threshold or the minimum separation distance. Really, the logical point is to do it over here in this area. That would require them to work on getting some sort of cross-access easement to this land down to the south, which isn't fully developed. I believe that there was some start, but it was never completed. But that is something that has to be addressed regardless of, it can't be overruled via zoning.
Hey, Jason, they're calling these single-family units, look like duplexes.
Yeah.
I'm trying to multitask.
So that's really what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, biattached, or it's, it's all on one site. I think this black and white actually is probably the easiest for you guys to read. This, this shows some landscaping around the perimeter, shows the footprints. They have done some variation of, of where the buildings sit. And our staff recommendation, we were recommending a couple of different kind of exterior layouts, or not exactly layout, but design look of the buildings. So that's, right now, what was initially submitted is essentially one design for the whole area, and the variation came in, just kind of staggering, and then also some variation in the placement of the stone veneer, whether it's a wainscote or covered, the whole facade. Storm detention area identified, which actually would be the western part of the site. Show you just a couple of typicals. I won't go through every sheet that we have showing how, you know, either wainscoting or full application of stone, but you can see the elevation views. And this is the, kind of getting a feel for it. Go ahead and put this back up, and then I'll just run through the actual conditions. So, condition was, conformance with the permitted development center comments, very standard. Addition of a note on the development plan, the states of the development plan, we'll come back to the P and Z for review and approval. We have a lot of conditions, a lot of moving parts, and we feel that this is a, a case where it should come back for a closer look in a public forum. Three, provision of a note to state that the number of permitted residential dwelling units with any future development shall be dependent upon the PUD development plan review and compliance concept plan. That's just really, just to kind of set a bar. Provision of the secondary remote access drive, that's stemming from the fire department, like I said, that, we have that in as a condition, but that's something that has to be done regardless. Five, speaking to adding more building design alternatives, give the, give a greater character to the development, so it's not mon, so monotone, helps with the, kind of the longevity of the appearance and, and the sense of community. And we have a few notes in here, they're just clarification about building materials. I won't read those verbatim, those through here. And then some standards, we, we believe that it, we believe what's shown here generally complies with this, but it's not, it's too vague, so we're suggesting that buildings be separated by at least ten feet, and at least twenty-five feet of separation between rear facades of the buildings. Eleven is that park, the comment, it's a private park, it's, we're calling it a park, but it's, you know, private play space. You can see in here that, that's shown back here. I would believe, you know, this is, these are, recall, they're three-bedroom units, so they're, you know, these are family units, there's gonna be a lot of kids and stuff. We feel that it needs to be adequate, green space. You know, with the denser development that's there, there's more people, but it was taller building, so you had more open space. So to accommodate that, we feel that there needs to be a, a good play area, open space area with, with, with the basketball court and other play features. Foundation plantings to help create that character within the community, that's condition number twelve. Just some additional information on stormwater management, it's condition thirteen. Same with sanitary sewer on fourteen. A note on the construction of any, any potential refuse or trash collection areas, enclosures. Just a note on their legal description. And the last one's same, like I said, it's another housekeeping note. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Could the applicant please come forward, get your name and address?
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members. My name is Mark Lee, Lee Engineers and Surveyors, 8003 Douglas Avenue, Urbendale, Iowa. I'm here representing Kading Properties. Tonight with me is Kerry Ramsey, the owner, and Dan Novelli, the construction manager. There are several items on here, and as we responded today to Bert Drost, we have agreed to all items except for three, which the remote access would be the first item. I'd like to produce a drawing. This particular drawing is the previously approved PUD, and on this drawing...
Excuse me, which way is north on this? I get confused frankly.
North is to the right. Would you like me to, does that help?
Yeah.
It would, it's, thank you.
I can get by with that, but everybody else?
Sometimes I can, sometimes I can't. Just get this centered here a little bit. But, as you know from the previously approved PUD, there was one access to the road. This secondary access was not used other than to the undeveloped, or partially developed property to the east.
Lee, you understand, and I'm trying to make sure I understand this, the remote access is something that is between the fire department and what we're doing here, right? Isn't that the one we're talking about?
Yes.
And you understand, we don't have any control over that?
Yes.
Okay.
Understand.
Okay.
Basically, tonight, we don't have authorization from the neighbors. We, we aren't able to contact them because it's in a foreclosure situation, not sure exactly how we can get to that point, so. But if I could continue, originally, when we went to the pre-application meeting, we were told that this access, can you zoom in, in this area? Or do I have to do that?
Jason, can you zoom in?
Good luck.
So this, this particular access, we approached staff at the pre-application meeting, and this actually was, at that point, would be allowed. In the staff recommendations then, that we got last Friday, they determined that there was something else. Regardless, the point which I'm going to make is that the street access doesn't change. So, when we access the street, it's gonna be at the same location regardless whether it's here or up three hundred and seventy-five feet. So I'm not sure, we really haven't had a whole lot of time to discuss that particular fire code with the fire chief, nor with staff, so there is some things that we'd like to work out there.
You had some other concerns?
I had two other concerns. Item five. Two additional building designs were recommended by staff. Porch element on the front, or a gable bump out on the rear of the unit. We've, this is actually an ongoing process, I think Mike would agree, we've met several times on this particular item, and we've modified the building to some degree. If I could have Dan Novelli come up, he has some building elevations that we'd like to propose to address this item.
If you're covering that item, why do we need to worry about it? I mean, he's welcome to come up, but I'm just trying to figure out if...
It's information staff didn't have the...
I understand, that's fine. I want him to come up, I'm just saying. I don't know, understand why that's a concern then.
Well, we're proposing one of the two.
All right.
And it says "or" in the, in the item, so I'm not sure if we're all on the same page, so Mike, if you can...
Okay, that's fine.
Help me out here. Dan?
Chairman, Council, I appreciate the opportunity. Dan Novelli, 7008 Madison Avenue, here for Kading Properties. Here is the additional building massing type that we've been requested to present, which we believe adheres to and complies with the request for a porch element on the front of the building. And this, this was, I, you know, in full disclosure, this was submitted recently, so just wanna...
So that addresses that one issue on item five. I guess if P and Z would allow me up, I could flip through a few of these that kind of show the variety of unit facades that are going on throughout the development. You've got a pretty large area of stone facade, and this would be on the exterior, so you would see it as you would go by it on the street. Another option, within the corners of the development. And then facing the east, you would have options E3. And E4, so a variety in the rear on the east side. And then throughout the development, you'd have different options to kind of break up the monotony of the biattachment. So again, that's that option H which would address hopefully item five. The park is item eleven. Item eleven, again, I'm gonna bring back the previous develop, approved concept development. And the reason why we chose the rear is because that's where it was in the previously approved development. And looking through the other, and I don't have the aerial.
It should be up there, you just can't... On the right-hand corner.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you can pick that up or not. Well, we can check, if we can zoom in here. In the other multifamily areas where there's some open space, it looks to me like there's also park area in the rear, or play area. Not sure if you designated as park, but play areas. Here would be one. So, we're willing to move it up front, but we're not sure a basketball court would be good up against the street. You know, balls and things running out in the street. So those details, I guess we'd kind of like to work out as far as the park elements. Other than that, we did have a neighborhood meeting, which was fairly successful, we had quite a few people show up. We talked about assessed values being diminished of properties adjacent to increased crime, traffic increases, all the way down to size of dogs, so. We, we had quite a discussion, I think we were there for almost two hours, so. And I think there may be some residents here tonight. We, the only thing that we really, that we'd like to address is the traffic increase, and that is, we're not changing the number of units, so that particular increase has already been considered in this particular street layout, so. We would address it that way. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions, if you may have them.
Any questions? Joanne?
Are these for purchase or rent?
These are for rent.
These are for rent?
So, they have over eight hundred units in the central Iowa area. These particular units are for rent or lease. They'd be condominiums.
Tim?
I have several questions, Mark.
Yes.
In the original PUD, you had seven, thirty plexes or close to that? Why, why the change in what you're doing here? Is that driven by the market? Or is there tax credits now, or what we got going on?
This developer, this is their standard unit, that they do, like I said, they have over eight hundred units, and this is what they provide in the, in the market. And they feel that there's a market for this particular unit in this area.
So in the original PUD, they weren't part of this?
No.
Okay.
No.
That makes sense. The stormwater, for the amount of land it looks like you're gonna cover, is that something that's been addressed by the city?
Yes.
Okay. How many bedrooms were going to be in the PUD in the apartment complexes? I'm just trying to get a feel for what the difference is gonna be in far as what amount of people are gonna live in this few acre area that's now really chopped up versus what's going on with the apartment complex?
At the PUD level, we don't actually track bedrooms, but this PUD, this what's here is seven, a total of seventy units, what's being proposed is thirty-five, I believe.
No, it's, it's seventy.
Seventy?
It's thirty-five buildings.
Oh, thirty-five. It's three-bedroom units.
Oh, three, okay.
Okay.
My bad.
These are three-bedroom units.
A lot of the concern of the neighbors were depreciation of properties. And I'm not sure if this is a question you can answer, but what's the difference in what these would be worth versus what the, the applications or the appellant's idea behind these row houses were?
I don't know that I'm professionally capable of answering that question, I'm sure you could answer it on both sides. I do know that these are more of a home look rather than an apartment look. So what was approved before was apartments. More of a large multifamily where this is, you know, it's a one-story family-looking area. So, how do you put, equate a damage assessed value to the neighbor? I don't know how you can get there.
I'm just trying to get into their mind with, with all the, it seemed like the constant concern was this is gonna depreciate my value of my homes even more. Was it like that when the original PUD, or has this changed something, I guess is what is getting at, maybe you had some insight to it?
I don't, I can't help you with that.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's what I have.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none, is there people here who desire to talk in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Just come on, come on up and line up on the wall, and we'll take you one at a time. I need your name and address.
My name is Tracy Rockus, and my address is 2101 Meadow Court, number 504. I guess I'm here to talk, one, about the assessment that was already talked about, that's not what I was gonna begin with, but, one, the people in the Meadow Ridge Town Home Association, and that's the association I live in, we are concerned, we did have a meeting on March 21st, and there are a lot of us concerned, a lot of us bought, you know, we were some of the unlucky folk that bought at a time when it was a seller's market. So we've already taken a big hit on our property values anyway. I just recently refinanced, and my home came in appraised at a hundred thousand, and I paid a hundred and thirty-eight-five for mine. And, and so that's one of our concerns, one of my concerns. I can't say I'm speaking for everybody, but I can say that the people that came to the meeting on March 21st were very concerned. Another thing I'd like to say why I'm opposed to this, I wished I could have been here at a meeting clear back when they were introducing seven units. I never got any notice of anybody buying that property and wanting to put anything up like that. Other words, I would have been here then because at that point in time, our market value was already still going down, and with the units that are in foreclosure, those were, you know, those were just going up when I was buying my property. So we were understanding that it was gonna be all homeowners in that area, people actually purchasing property. And so that was another concern. And now we hear it's going from seven big buildings to thirty-five, that's a small area. If you guys were to go look at that, that's not, that's clustered in there, I mean, that's just a small area for that larger development. So that was one of the other things I wanted to bring up. I was not able to make it to the March 18th meeting because the letter dated on May, or March 11th, you know, it took a day or two to get to me. That, I'm a teacher, so that was like the first couple of days of my spring break, and so I was out of town for a couple of days. So I wished I could have been there, and I'm sorry I wasn't to express my concerns then. And so, that was the other thing, and with, it comes to the, the natural site, I'm an animal lover, there's coyotes living over in that area, I hear them all the time, and so that was one concern. I hope that, you know, whatever goes, that you guys take that into consideration. And then the other thing I was concerned about was that, that just came up with the park going up in the front, and this would be more for you guys than the city really would be. There's a lot of traffic that, that already goes around that turnabout there. And we do have neighboring renters to, I'm not good with my directions either, so, but right there, I live right there on that corner of that turnabout, I'm in the 500 building, so these people are gonna be right on my lap. So if I were to... I am, I can't tell from this, and I'm sorry, I really can't. Okay, so yes, I'm in the 500 building, and so I see a lot of traffic there already with the neighbors to the Meadowlands apartments, not anything to do with the townhome owners. So, that's a concern, that many buildings that are rented buildings on top of that, and so I just wanted to express my concerns there.
Any questions? Thank you. Please step forward, give us your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Mildred Rivera, and I'm Tracy's immediate neighbor, so where I, my unit, I live in that side, okay? So Tracy had exposed the concern relating to the, our value of our properties, okay? But also, I took a time to do research with respect to the Kading properties, and the reviews that I found was thirty-four out of them, and this comes from Altoona, they have built in Altoona, Newton, Boone, Perry, and Urbendale. And seventy-three point five percent of the ratings were negative, okay? And many, and I categorize these reviews into four category. First of all, the quality of construction. According to the reviews, the, the construction is poor, for example, doors and windows are not sealed, big gaps, and front doors cannot be locked, plumbing problems, mold growth on walls under the carpets, which puts the tenants at health risk, big cracks on the foundation. The question is, why does the city allow inspection to pass if the construction is of low standards with the risk of public safety? Secondly, is the construction that they, the personnel that they hire to do this type of construction, do they comply with the state laws and regulations? do they comply with the state laws and regulations? And whether they do background checks on them? And thirdly, has anybody reported this type of health, public risk, and poor construction to HUD? So an investigation is conducted? So that's concerning to construction. The second item is management. Lack of communication, poor response and treatment to tenants' needs, the rude, nasty yelling, harassment, bullying, problems getting deposit back without a valid cause, inaccurate information given when tenants move in. And there's a particular manager that has been rated very poorly. Concerning to maintenance, poor pest control program, meaning that they have birmingham problems, roaches, spiders, et cetera. Don't keep the units in sanitary conditions, dirty and gross before new tenants move in. One occasion, there was human waste in the toilet and water was not on. Do not fix problems on time or not at all. Poor lawn care and snow removal. When spraying chemicals on the lawn, management do not notify tenants and pets get sick. And this also represents a health risk to children. So in other words, they do not take care properly to get rid of the mold problems and soot buildup above heaters. This is the most common problem that I found in my research. And this put peoples at risk. Neighbor issues, parking problems, not enough space, no pet supervision. There is a claim of people owning pit bull. Children without supervision. There have been claims of children having knives and air guns. And there has been claims of drug problems and pedophiles moving in. So in summary, with what I have exposed here, that type of housing configuration will have a negative impact to the value of our properties. At the same time, having a repercussion on the property tax revenues for the city of Des Moines will increase the traffic problem to the extent that Meadowlands Drive and Meadow Court will become a parking option for tenants that own more than one vehicle, reducing the traffic flow to one lane and creating a blockage to our driveways. If problem emerged between the Kedlin Property Tenant Management and the Town Home Associations.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
We're going to give you about one more minute.
Oh, yes, and I'm practically done. Whether management is capable of addressing and solving the issues and just exposing that the majority of the reviews gave a very negative response concerning to management professionalism and capability of solving problems. So this is the research that I came with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan? Dan? Question.
Greg.
Where did you get your research and your reviews from?
Oh, I have, I went to the website. And I got the reviews from here.
You want to go ahead and file those with the clerk?
Sure.
And then the other thing is, we need your unit number.
Oh, I'm sorry. I live in 2101 Meadow Court, 602 is my unit number.
You got your answer.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please step forward, give us your name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm Diana Kramer. And I am from 2101 Meadow Court, number 403. I have recently moved to Des Moines in the last year. And I lived on the west side for a short time. Decided I wanted to venture out and buy a home of my own. I found the townhome in Meadow Ridge and was very impressed with the cleanliness of the area, the quietness of the area. So I purchased the home in October. And I have thoroughly enjoyed my stay there. Then I recently found out that we were going to have new tenants in the neighborhood. I went, did go to the meeting. And they were very upfront and honest about what they planned to do with that area of property. But I was also very concerned because of the size. I also did some research, as the former lady discussed, online and checked out all the, I just brought up their address or their name of their company, just to see what all was out there. I found all of the same reviews. And I even took time to drive to their new development over in Altoona. And their buildings looked very neat and clean, although I know they're just moving into them. I did notice that my concern was the longevity of the buildings over time. I had a huge concern of what they're going to look like in another five to 10 years. And my plan is to stay in my townhome until I retire or after. So I have concerns about the near future. I also have concerns that we already have a low-income rental situation to the west of my property. And there's already a lot of times when I see cars coming and going that give me a lot of concern. I'm a single lady. I live by myself. I have grandkids that come and visit. And I was told at the meeting that some of the people that are going to be living in these duplexes, their income can be $24,000. That's a concern to me. Not that I don't want people of that salary to not have someplace to live, but I have concerns whether that is the right location for them. I also know that the apartment or condominiums that are across from my location at number 403, I know that the building had stopped there. And I was told during the meeting that somebody is taking that over and building apartments there, which is going to cause an even larger influx of travel on Meadow Court, which is already very busy with a dead-end corner with that circle around. And I'm in hopes, as I watch the news, I have noticed that it appears that our housing market is starting to come back with the economy. I know it's hard to believe that. But some of the things I've seen, there's a lot of states and areas that are short housing. I'm hoping that if we can keep Meadow Ridge and the surrounding areas up to a good environment for couples to want to live with their young families or retired people to want to live, that hopefully we can get our property values back up and possibly get people moving into those condominiums. I would really like to see a choice for zoning versus the rentals in that corner that they're proposing. It would be nice if we could get some single-family homes in there to get more upstanding citizens in the community and keep that side of Des Moines growing nicer and keep up with what you're trying to do in South Ridge Mall. And I also have a concern with what, another thing that they're proposing with these units, they're going to allow two 40-pound dogs to be in each one of these units. We already have discussed the fact that there's not going to be very much yard space. And being right where I am on my location, I'm already cleaning up a lot of dog feces every day. I really do not want to have to do a more excessive amount. Anyway, I just, I'm, you know, my other ideas were possibly some low-income for elderly that are needing someplace nicer to live. You know, some type of a complex like that, something that we don't have quite so much traffic problems down in that corner. I appreciate your time and your patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions? Thank you. Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Lynette Chapman, 2100 Meadow Chase Lane, unit 505. And I live in this building here. I have several concerns. One, I was also not able to attend the March 18th meeting because of work. I understand in terms of traffic, roundabouts are really nice. But unfortunately, the number of people who go the wrong way through them is very high. And you're looking at putting in a large number of units directly on that roundabout. And I can see if you're coming up Meadowlands, that they're going to insist on going to the left when it is a go-around to the right. We also have the issue in terms of traffic over, we're right there at Highway 65, 69, going south, right at the bypass in Indianola. With the development that has been going on, the traffic there has become a lot heavier. And in the mornings, when I'm going to work, it would be really nice in terms of traffic to get that wide and maybe get some turn lanes or something to help facilitate that kind of a traffic situation. The letter that was sent made a comment about this property being condominiums, which intimated to me that they were going to be purchased properties. Hearing that they're going to be rental, I am now strongly opposed to it. We already have two rental properties there to the west and south of that property. That many units coming directly off of a roundabout is going to be severe congestion. The environmental, you know, green space is going to be very diminished. I would much prefer to see possibly, if they're going to insist on being rentals, I agree, perhaps elderly rental property. I would also recommend possibly maybe reducing the overall number of units because of the congestion that's already existing in that area. As far as moving the park area, perhaps moving it to the center so it's away from the street, yet it's still centrally located for all of the residents. And I'm also concerned, I was buying in a buyer's market, but my property value has already diminished too. So let's see, roundabout, the parking. I did like that they're moving them to single stories. But the whole rental thing, totally against.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street. I did attend the meeting that the developers conducted. And one of the questions I had was surprisingly about fire access. I think you'll remember that. And I was surprised that that was going to go through the way it was. And I have a question. I'm wondering why the city hasn't proposed that pine go-through, which is the road off of Indianola here to go through and actually allow access. Because I, at the meeting, you remember, I asked about, did the city ask about leaving an out point to what could be a future pine to go through there? There are issues with this. The downside is if it goes the other way, it's probably a worse project if we go back to a whole bunch of higher-density two-story buildings. So I think our best option here is to work with the developer to try and get some of the adjustments made to make the project a better project. My wife did drive by the ones in Altoona. I think these probably must be a little dressier than those because she didn't describe those so glowingly. These actually look visually pretty nice. So I think the biggest concern was for me, the fire access density. But there's nothing we can do about that. That's set. Most of this plan must have been set way before I was involved because I was never invited to any meetings before here. I was surprised there was actually apartments back in here. So, and then you'll be happy to know, oh, she's gone. A side note, I got a text during the last time we were up here that the OSCO drug cut down trees today right across the street from the Hy-Vee. So everybody should be happy to hear that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Mr. Lee, you need some time for rebuttal.
There are a few items. But before I get to those, Kedlin Properties has been in the central Iowa area for quite some time. And I've been working for them for 15 years. Their quality is par none. They use 50-year maintenance materials. They manage their sites very well. And they would really like and enjoy to be able to work and provide homes in the city of Des Moines. To this point, they have not. They haven't really attempted to. But they would like to and enjoy that. I think a lot of the items should be addressed by the owner, Carrie Ramsey. And if that's okay, Chairman, I would ask her up to address them.
She needs some rebuttal time, you bet.
Thank you.
My name is Carrie Ramsey. I'm at 7008 Madison Avenue in Urbandale, Iowa. Appreciate you guys hearing us out tonight. One thing is, it is very personal for me. There are 38 comments out on the website. Our intent was to go into the neighborhood meeting and let everybody know what our intent is. We told them that it would be condominiums. It also would be, they would also be leased. We're very proud of the product that we put out. There are 38 comments out on the website. The first one being reported in 2004. We have, our average tenancy stay is two and a half years, company-wide. And in our projects that we have that are a little bit closer to the metro, we have some Urbandale and stuff like that, it's seven years. So people don't stay in units for two and a half, seven years if they're unhappy with the service. And I think that that speaks volume for the company that we have. There, we are in the business to lease. We do sometimes irritate people. We do have a maintenance team that is onsite. The property will be kept up, will be clean, or they will not be our tenant. It is very important to us. We cannot lease to good, solid tenants if one tenant doesn't follow the rules. The reason they will be in a condominium is just for that purpose alone. We want to make sure that we can maintain and that we have the control to do an eviction if there is something that, you know, we don't allow. If somebody's breaking a rule, we have to have a repercussion. And that's the reason they will be in the condominium state. So it allows us to have that property regime on them. You know, I know a lot of companies that offer $10 off your rent. And you go out and write a good comment and bring it in, we'll give you $10 off. And I'm sure that, you know, you can respect that. I do take the comments to heart. I do read everyone. And I do address everyone with my staff. But I think they're pretty obvious from reading them. You can probably see right through them. We do put a better product on than most of the builders. In fact, our exterior products are going to be a 50-year lifetime shingle and a 50-year siding. The reason being is we own them, we maintain them. We want them to be easily maintained. And we want them to last a long time. We have a six, this project will be $6.5 million. We have 20% of that is our own investment. So you can see that we want the properties to be nice because we have a huge investment in them also. And that is a huge investment in the community. At this point in time, I just would like to open it up to any questions you may have for me.
Any questions? Greg? Tim?
On the south side, we've had some experience with tax credit housings. It seems that we have a better grasp on what's going on as far as security. When there's somebody there, be it an off-duty police officer or onsite security personnel with closed-circuit TVs, what do you have in place? Or what are you planning on doing at this particular place?
Yeah, a lot of times, we will have someone who lives on the site, normally like a corner, easily accessed unit. And that way, there is someone that they can go to in case of an emergency. We do have some video surveillance and stuff like that on some of the sites. So we are able to monitor that way.
Brian, you those propose on this side?
Yes, we can definitely do that if it's important. And it is, you know, it is 70 units. So, you know, it is, you know, obviously, the ones with the greater volume are the, we feel like more necessary to watch over. But we really, we have a wide variety of tenants. We have a lot of elderly people. Our average age for our tenants are 39. So we do have quite a few elderly people. Even though they are three-bedroom, we find a lot of people like to have a sewing room or a craft room or a TV room or something like that. So just, you know, the three-bedroom doesn't necessarily mean they're actually sleeping in all three rooms. We see a lot of people that just use, you know, one of the rooms really for sleeping.
Again, from experience in a development like this, sometimes a guest will come and stay. stay for extended periods of time. Will your onsite manager be like looking out for things like this, or will they be patrolling?
Yes.
It just, it makes a huge difference on the operation of that particular...
Yes, and actually, our onsite person will, and then we also have someone daily there onsite from our service team.
At night?
Throughout, it could be any hours. And, you know, it will be, it will vary daily. But we do have a two-car minimum. That's all they can have, or maximum, I'm sorry. Two cars, and they do have to be registered to that property. So, if there is another car with another, we find a lot of people get new cars and they, you know, register them differently or something. So, we do have a lot of clerical just to make sure that they get their car registered and that that car gets removed from the property. But there are, we do have that rule, so there are two, and that's built into the condo regime.
That's pretty reasonable. I like that. One last question. We talked about, somebody brought up the fact what the minimum income level was. Is there a bus route going out there? And if not, is there a sidewalk that protects people? That, I haven't been out there in quite a while myself. And somebody made mention that, you know, this isn't the right place. And I'm just thinking, what do you have for transportation out there?
We feel like, you know, it is the right place. Our average income is thirty-eight thousand five hundred for all of our properties, and our metro, more metro, is forty-two thousand. So, I don't really consider that to be low income. I know that there's a lot of families that are making ends meet on those budgets. So, it is not a government-subsidized project, but we do feel like, there will be a sidewalk. There is a sidewalk that will access, the one to the south is already developed, that apartment building is developed, so it will tie into their sidewalk along with the road will tie into that, their project as well. And then the property just to the north is the property that has not been fully developed. That's also a condominium.
And the bus route?
The DART bus route is close, but it is, does not come down into this cul-de-sac area.
Yes, they have no plans at this point to bring a bus there.
We would encourage that, though.
Well, if this gets passed, I would strongly recommend that you knock on their door and see if they'd work on it. Thank you.
Yeah, we have contacted them.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Lynette Chapman, twenty-one hundred Meadow Chase Lane, Unit five zero five. In addressing the question about the bus route, to my knowledge, the closest bus route other than if there's a paratransit issue is South Ridge Mall, which is approximately just over a mile away.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move denial of the application for amendment.
Okay. Mike, you said you had some comments?
Yeah, just for the record on the, on the comments that are made tonight, I just want to remind the commission that ownership or, or status of ownership is not a zoning matter. There's single-family housing, there's duplex housing, there's multifamily housing, and we don't regulate between whether they're owned or rented. A single-family house can be rented in Des Moines. So, I can't speak to the comments. I haven't reviewed all of the website comments or whatever, or their validity, but, and I can't speak to what other jurisdictions or where those projects are located. In Des Moines, we do have a rental code and rental inspection of rental units. And I can't speak to what other jurisdictions do or don't have for their units. But in Des Moines, we do have rental inspections, and there are minimum standards that all housing have to be, has to meet in order to be rented in Des Moines legally. One thing I will point out is that, you know, condominium ownership, regime, et cetera, you know, I'm not quite certain these are not individually plotted lots. It is all one lot shown on this plan. The condominium, I assume, would apply to just the building envelopes, and maybe the, Mr. Lee or the applicant can confirm that. But it would appear that the exterior grounds would be maintained, you know, by a common unit. And quite honestly, we have other condominium projects in Des Moines, unfortunately, where, you know, all the units are owned by one entity. That is occurring all over, and the units aren't rented. I think they've been open to the fact that they are proposing rental units on this, and they, they said they stated at the neighborhood meeting and, and that. As far as the traffic, seventy units are already approved on this property. There's no increase in density. The type of housing has changed, and I think that's what's triggering the fire code comments that you've received to date. The multifamily structure that was approved before typically require a fire sprinkler system, and so that's probably what's dictating not having to have the secondary access, plus just the age of the PUD. I'm quite certain that the fire code has changed somewhat since the original PUD was approved. So, I'm not certain that today even you would be able to construct with one access in there. But if so, my guess is it's partly because the multifamily structures, more than two units in the building would require a fire sprinkler system, which a duplex does not. So, that's probably what's triggering the secondary access requirement to the site. The comments about the playgrounds, I think if you look at your PUD play, set, the adjoining properties do have multiple play areas shown on their, on their projects, and they are dispersed around the units in the different phases of the project. This one, our concern is, and there may have been a play area shown on the back of this. I think experience, again, over time, has made us maybe a little wiser about where we're placing some of these amenities onsite. And our concern currently on this current proposal is, is that that play area is fairly remote on the site, and the ability to monitor that for police from a, from a public street is very limited when it's tucked back in that corner. The, I can't really address other things. Again, we don't regulate from a zoning standpoint the income of tenants in a, in a, in a development. I think they've indicated they would have an onsite manager, for the record, and also video surveillance. The question about Pine Street being extended, I'm not aware of any plans. There's already an approved, I believe, development to the north of this, which is an approved R-five, R-five land-lease community to the north of this. So, I'm not aware of a, of Pine Street extending easterly through this property. I think that was approved in about two thousand or two thousand and one. On the construction quality, again, all I can say is for, within the city, we do have inspections of construction at various stages. I can't speak to the jurisdictions where they have other units and what kind of inspection they have on construction. As far as their comments on the building designs that were presented, if it ultimately does go forward, if council chooses to approve the project, we would continue to want to work with them on those building designs to have that variety. And the design that was submitted tonight, I, I think that would be something that would be finalized through the final development plan review if it, if it came back to you. And I apologize, I just had a couple of other comments I wanted to at least address as what was made. Property values? It's, it's really not, it's not something that can be considered here. I mean, I think they've countered with a six-point-five million dollar investment on the property. And so, I, I'm not aware of any studies that show that there is a, a, you know, automatic decline in property values. Again, there's multifamily housing proposed on the property now, so this is really a, a more, more buildings. It is a, quote, "less intense" pattern. There is quite a bit of variety on here of different housing types, which I don't know that a duplex would be inconsistent with what's shown here for housing types. I think with, you know, I'll just close with, I think the key with, with any property is maintenance, whether it's single-family housing or whether it's multifamily housing or anything. So, maintenance is the key, and I think Mr. Baller can probably attest to that. He, I think he's spoken before about single-family houses in some neighborhoods. The difficulty is, you can own a house and not be required to maintain it under any kind of maintenance code in the city of Des Moines. Sometimes you're better off with rental from the perspective of being able to have rental inspections. But other than that, those are the staff's final comments.
Any other comments? Greg?
You said there was a higher-density unit, those seven units, proposed on that property. They've been approved.
Yes.
Right.
So, this board has been down this road to approve that building type on this property on previous occasions.
Correct.
So, now we take the same number of tenants, per se...
Units.
And spread them out over the property.
Greg?
I guess I'm just going to say I can't support Will's motion because I think this is better than the original proposal, and they could build those two-story units that probably do devalue property and do those other things that some of the neighbors don't want. So, I, I can't support Will's motion. Greg, one of my concerns is, I don't, all of these comments that the city has stated in their, in their recommendations, I don't know that we've had a project with so many provisos. I also noticed on the plan that two storm detention basins are located right in the backyard of about four or five of the units, which shows to, suggests to me that the thought in terms of designing this, this project hasn't been thought through sufficiently.
This is preliminary development, and they have to come back to us with a final development plan that shows grading, drainage, layout, landscaping, and all that stuff. So, this is a concept plan, and so we don't know those answers. And I guess, I'm, I'm willing to let them come back, but that's, that's me.
Any other comments? Shirley?
I have to agree with Greg. Having been around when the original plan, when this plan came through initially, this to me is a huge improvement over what we had with those apartment-looking-like buildings. And I feel like it deserves some just cause here to work out some details. I'm glad to see the staff recommendations, you know, the number of staff recommendations there are. I think that that kind of secures things, and the fact that it does have to come back to us for an approval, I'm comfortable with that.
Any other? Joanne? Tim?
I'll be real honest with you, I hate this project. It looks like the person in one unit can sneeze and the other person can say gazuntite. It just is so packed in there. And I, I understand what Greg's saying, and I understand that we're going to worry about drainage later on. I just don't see how it's going to work. I truthfully don't. I mean, if, if it weren't so heavily packed in and the, and the things weren't also cookie-cutter, I probably wouldn't have as big a problem. But it just, ah, I can just see the whole drainage mess that we're going to have. When you drain onto one person's property, they drain onto somebody else's property, you got a problem. And, and you, everybody knows well how upset I get about the whole drainage thing anyway, about who retains water and who discharges water on whose property. I just don't see that happening, and I'm not willing to go forward on that with that understanding.
Any other comments? Joanne?
I'm inclined to agree that the density is frightening. I'd, I'd like, you know, if you just took one out of each line, it would, it would be better. It appears if this is anywhere near scale, you don't have your ten feet between your buildings even as required over here. So, it's...
Isn't density the same?
The density of population is the same, but the density of the footprint of the buildings is considerably different.
Okay, that's, okay, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm concerned about kids. I don't want to be elitist about this. I grew up in a neighborhood that was built during World War II, when there was a real concern about affordable housing here in Des Moines. My parents, my father worked at the, at the ordinance plant, and I grew up in, in a cottage like this. And, but even with a cottage style and size, we still had a real front yard, and we still had a real backyard, and we still, although we heard sometimes people fighting next door, we still had, you know, some space in between the buildings. And, and Frank, I don't see that here.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Sen. I'm, I'm going to call it to, to a vote. The motion is to deny the request. All those in favor of denial of the request, please signify by raising your right hand. Three. Okay. Opposed? Is there a motion? Motion fails, by the way.
Move staff, is that what you're asking for?
Yep, that's what I'm asking for. All right. Jax moved staff. All those in favor, please signify by, wait, before that, is there any questions or comments? Just to make sure. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. You have the same result. Passes. We moved on to...
I would comment that I suspect the developer and owner has been listening to all of the comments of the august body here, and that knowing that they have to make a return visit will K E.
Yep, we hope so. I did have one question, Jason, before we get out on this. With the return of cars, is there a six-seventh vote required anyway?
We, I'm not sure that...
I don't know, I was just curious.
We'll have to track that before the concept plan goes to council.
What makes it complicated is there's so many condominiums, so it makes, we have a lot of cars, but it's not necessarily a large area.
Right, right. Okay, that's why I was curious. Okay.
So, again, for the public's benefit, we would forward the communication from the commission to the council on their April...
Eighteenth.
No.
Oh, no, that's, that's Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the recommendation of the commission would go on April twenty-second to the council for a set hearing, I believe, or actually, they could, it's just a concept plan, so it's not a rezoning of the property. April twenty-second would be the council meeting to discuss this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Director's report?
Just two things. Next Tuesday night is the training session in Johnston for the P and Z. I have the ten people that are registered. Ted is not able to go. He registered, is not able to go. So, we do have one additional space open if there was anybody that had not registered. I have Dan, Christine, Mike Simonson, Greg Guadie, Ted, Vicki Stogdill, Will Page, Joanne, Dory, Timothy, and Tim. And I didn't know if there was anybody that would like to attend in Ted's place Tuesday night. John? Okay?
Five-thirty.
Five, it starts at...
It's at six, it starts at...
Again, five-thirty, there's a light, dinner provided. The training starts at six and goes till eight forty-five, and that's at the Hilton Garden Inn in Johnston, eighty-sixth and...
Jeff wants to go, that was fine, but if he can't, I...
Okay?
Well, if I get into a snag, then I'll call you. Yeah, I, I just, my schedule stinks.
Okay, okay.
But I think I'm going to be able to go.
Just let me know tomorrow.
Dan, I have one comment.
Can you let me know tomorrow? That's...
I'll wait, I'll wait, they're fine.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Shirley?
I just wanted to say to, when I look around, probably mainly the staff, and then I look at Dan and Greg and myself, Dr. Bruce Heilmann...
Oh, yeah.
Wanted me to give you very warm regards. Wanted me to give you very warm regards, and, uh, I talked with him last night, and, uh, he was saying that there are times that he actually turns on and still watches us.
Greg, did you have anything? That being said, adjourned.